It's time now for the Casey Ingram Show on WSTU. The opinions expressed are those of the program hosts and guests and not necessarily those of WSTU. WSTU does not endorse products that may be mentioned. Any reproduction or retransmission of this broadcast is strictly prohibited without written consent of WSTU. It's time to call in with your questions and comments at 2209-788-220WSTU. And now here's Casey Ingram.
Good morning. So we are back on Facebook Live. It's February 21st, but this show will air on WSTU on February 28th. So if you're listening on the radio right now, we recorded the show last week, but if you're on Facebook right now, tune in because I have Mary Dawson in the studio. And I know a lot of you folks know Mary. She's a former county commissioner from a few years ago and a wonderful author. She's just released her third book in a series just a couple of months ago. So we're going to talk to Mary about a lot of that. But before we get into the show, Michael Circus for Martin County Commission District Five wants to remind all residents that the greatest power you have as a resident is to be involved in your local politics. Vote on August 20th for your next county commissioner. Michael Circus, focused on the future, educated on the past. Paid for by Michael Circus Campaign for County Commission District Five. And everybody, I want you, if you can head out, if you're looking for something to do on the weekend, head up to Archie's, Archie Seabreeze in Fort Pierce, 401 South Ocean Drive. Who's there? It is Susie Nash, and she's going to be in the studio March 6th. We're going to talk about her new release, and she's going to be going on tour as wonderful, wonderful country singer. But she's at Archie's Saturdays from 5:00 to 8:00 and Sunday from 2:00 to 5:00 and also Friday from 5:00 to 8:00. So hop on out out there and take a listen to Susie. She's absolutely fantastic. So in the studio, as I said, I have Mary Dawson. Mary is a New Orleans native who graduated from Rice University in Houston, Texas. She later attended graduate school in art history at the University of Washington in Seattle. Mary has been both married and widowed, as well as married and divorced, and has four amazing children and one fascinating grandchild. She's an avid advocate for developing a thriving local food economy with a particular focus on solidifying agricultural agriculture using western lands. Mary is also a local history enthusiast and has written books on the topic, including one about women in France during World War II. In 1978, Mary relocated to Martin County where she became heavily involved in community work. She served on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Martin County's first comprehensive plan in 1980 and later became a Martin County Commissioner from 1988 to 1992. During her time as Commissioner, she cast the deciding vote to adopt the 1990 Comprehensive Plan. And folks, we're going to be talking about that Comprehensive Plan today a lot. In 1995, Mary decided to pursue law and enrolled in law school. In 1997, she graduated summa cum laude and passed the Florida Bar Exam. Her first published article titled "The Best-Laid Plans: The Rise and Fall of Growth Management in Florida" was published by FSU that same year. In 2002, Mary established Friends of Martin County with the goal of building consensus to study and preserve western lands. However, her efforts faced strong opposition from anti-growth factions, and she was ultimately excommunicated, albeit politely, by Nat Reed. Mary's dedication to growth management led to an appointment by Governor Jeb Bush to represent Martin County on the Committee for Sustainable Treasure Coast for two years starting in 2003. During this time, national experts taught her planning concepts, which helped shape her advocacy work. In 2007, Mary played a key role in helping Martin County adopt its first policy, allowing clustering in the western lands. You've probably heard that term recently with the Rural Lifestyle Amendment. However, despite being upheld by the Florida Supreme Court, the policy was never utilized and proved to be costly for Mary personally. Nevertheless, it still remains in the county's plan. Due to her outspokenness against unsustainable development, she has become persona non grata to Martin County's anti-growth factions. However, she has not let this discourage her from continuing to work towards preserving the beauty of our area. From 2007 to 2015, Mary dedicated herself to researching and writing an application for the designation of Martin Grade at the scenic highway. You guys have all driven down that Martin Highway. It's my favorite road in Martin County. It's absolutely gorgeous. And Mary's efforts paid off when it was officially recognized as such in 2015. Aside from her advocacy work, Mary is also an accomplished author. In 2013, she won three statewide awards for her first novel titled "The Riverway Home", which is historical fiction based on her Martin Grade research. The following year, she published "Code Name Nanette: A Gripping Tale About Female Resistance Fighters in France During World War II." Adding to her list of accomplishments, Mary has played a key role in building Palm City Farm Produce and Market, a marketplace that promotes and supports local food producers. You've definitely seen that out there by Citrus Highway. Her dedication to promoting sustainable and locally sourced foods has made a positive impact on our community. Mary's passion for writing has led her to publish another novel in 2023, "Indian Town." It serves as a sequel to "The Riverway Home" and also a prequel to "Code Name Nanette." Her books can be found in Stewart Heritage Museum, Palm City Farms, and on Amazon. That was a very long introduction, but Mary, you have a life's work that I'm so excited you're here to discuss with us today. We're going to talk about the comp plan and so many things that you've been passionate about, as well as writing, and your current release here that just came out in November, "Indian Town." So welcome to the studio.
Well, I appreciate you having me. Thank you.
Mary, it's absolutely my pleasure. I was most excited, and folks, I can take questions and comments on Facebook because we are live on Facebook. Again, this show is pre-recorded for the radio on February 28th. But Mary, I'm most excited to talk to you about Martin County. There's so many discussions right now. The commission is going through the comp plan right now, and there's been some changes with it over the last couple of years. I think it was two years ago now, the Rural Lifestyle Amendment was passed, and that's something that focused on clustering, and we'll talk about that and your views. You talked about resistance against the anti-growth, the anti-growth factions had against your ideas, but Mary, your heart is to preserve those western lands.
Yes. I would like to start out with actually not rural lands and Rural Lifestyle Amendment. I would actually like to congratulate the Martin County Commission for yesterday voting to put the Martin County Forever, what do you call it, referendum for November.
Yes.
And this is actually, this actually all goes together because it is all about western lands. And the only question that was ever really going to work, depending on where your values are and why you care, is to preserve them. You can't ever keep them out of development if you don't take them out of development completely forever. And the Martin County Forever Amendment will do that. We've done a lot of that with SERP and with other lands that we've acquired. The Martin County Forever Amendment will, if it passes, will build on that history and culture of Martin County where we preserve our lands, and that's how we've dealt with our western lands. I would like to add one thing, though, and I would like to get back to it later in the conversation if possible. I believe that it would be best and do more to remain to keep the Martin County difference if most of that money was spent not on the western lands, but in the eastern part of the county, buying up all the blue ways. And we can talk about that later if you want to.
We definitely will, Mary. And I'll say, we had Merritt Matheson on two weeks ago, and he was with Martin County Forever. We went over those different maps, and 100% the blue ways, water. You've got to think about land by the water. It's simple, and you're absolutely right. This half cent proposal is very exciting, folks, and it's exciting for two reasons. Number one, what the commission did yesterday is said, Martin County residents, you get to decide. It's going to be on the ballot. Do we want to tax ourselves half cent? Nobody's making it happen. We get to decide. Secondly, and Mary, this is what I really want to talk to you about, is preserving those lands, and that is what this will do because there's so many folks that argue that it's, you know, one unit per 20 acres, that's fine for the western lands. But Tallahassee can come in, as we saw with the Live Local Act, and change local zoning and regulations, the snap of a finger. And the only way to preserve, Mary, Mary, what is the only way to truly preserve land where Tallahassee cannot come in and take away our local rule?
Thank you. There's only one way. You have to acquire it. The thing is, there's only, there's two ways to acquire property. I'm a firm believer in property rights. I'm a proud American, and that's actually what's made the American economy and middle class so strong, is that we have property rights that are sacrosanct. So you can't take their land. You can't regulate their land's use away forever. You can slow it down, but you can never stop it unless you acquire either the actual land itself, or you get some sort of an easement where you acquire the uses on the land through either a conservation easement or a covenant that runs with the land. You can buy it with money, but no government in God's green earth has enough money to buy the land. There's another way to buy land, and this is like the last 25 years of my life that keeps getting me in trouble in Martin County. But we have a currency that we have never valued before. Historically, when you go, when a developer goes to a local government and asks for development on their property or a land use change or something, we've given it away. We've given away billions of dollars of value just because they asked, and nobody's ever really gotten compensated for the value that a 3-2 vote can give. Well, you can use that 3-2 vote to acquire the property, and clustering is one way to do it. The reason that the amendment that's in the Comprehensive Plan didn't work, and I knew it wouldn't from day one, but the commissioner who proposed it was so desperate to do the right thing that we did the best we could. The reason it didn't work is it didn't have any incentives. Remember, in order to get something, you have to give something. Now, the thing that makes Martin County so perfect for this is the fact that the densities are so low out west and that our rules are so strict that the rest of the Florida, when they develop out west, they develop out west at urban densities of three, four, eight units an acre. And that means that you end up with sprawl, marching all the way to the lake if we develop in the pattern that we are, that our Comprehensive Plan says we will develop in. If we could get, take all the land out there, out of play by giving them one unit per five acres, give them four times what they have, which it benefits them, give us, take the land out of play, put, make them cluster, reconstruct natural systems, reconstitute the way the world used to work before we cut it up into small pieces, then we will still have densities, we will still have rural densities. We'll cut our, once I did a number, probably 200,000 people out of the county ultimately if we did that. So we can buy land with development approvals. We can buy, or we can buy the use of land with development approvals. And that gets us to the Rural Lifestyle Amendment that you wanted to talk about. It's really not that big a deal. It's, it retains an agricultural density. It sets aside property forever out of the use.
Forever.
In all truth, it's because they're doing golf courses in the way that those are designed, they're really kind of cherry picking, and they're going to, they're maximizing their profit. United States is all about maximizing your profit. You're not evil for being a capitalist unless you take advantage of that in some way and do extra evil. Money, earning money isn't evil. Doing bad things with it later might be.
That's right.
So what's the problem? You know, it is, we don't have the money to buy it.
Right.
We can't keep them, keep it that way forever.
No. Like I said, we just saw with the Live Local Act with Tallahassee, they did change zoning regulations, and that's something that, it can happen to the western lands unless we can keep that land out of the government or, you know, it can't be rezoned. If you can take it and put it in conservation forever, that's the only way to keep the government from rezoning it. This half cent tax will purchase lands like that. With the Rural, the Lifestyle, Rural Lifestyle Amendment, Mary, tell me if I'm wrong, but some of the things I liked about it, you know, it's a minimum of 1,000 acres, and they had to put a large portion of it into permanent easement of conservation. If you think about that, the animals, the wildlife, there's no roads going through there that's, you know, even right now with western Martin County, you have all these roads crisscrossing the entire county and all the animals that have to cross the road. They don't have 1,000 acres to run on. They have little 20-acre plots, and then you've got people go, oh, my gosh, there's a bear. And we've seen what happens sometimes with that because they're frightened, where these animals will have a large portion of land that they can live on that doesn't have the interference of traffic going 80 miles an hour through it, or different people worried about the wild animal in their backyard. It's, to me, it offers a lot more conservation, and it's a lot better just for our wildlife and just conserving wild Florida, the old Florida.
Well, I agree with everything that you say, but I'm not an environmentalist in the way that maybe a lot of people think. I don't do it, I don't think we need to save the environment as much for the animals as we need to save it for the people. I got to environmentalism when I realized that if we didn't do something to clean up our act environmentally, that my children and hopefully my grandchild at that time wouldn't have a place to live that was worth living in. And so, yes, I'm all for the animals. I really don't like all those many alligators.
But there you are.
But, you know, and I don't want the pythons, for God's sakes.
Right, right.
But, but we do have to save it for the animals. But that surrounding people by nature is one of the things that makes them feel good and live well, and that is, and the other thing that preserving all that land does, it gets to something that is absolutely the key to the heart of a lot of Martin County people's thinking, is it cuts down population growth. And stopping population growth or slowing it down has been an absolutely major goal of Martin County residents since I got here in 1968. We did a survey back in 20 years ago, and what do you care about? What is your vision for Martin County? And they said, low density and green are the two things that they said. Somebody recently did a similar survey and got exactly the same answers. And so it, not only does it put aside, keep land in green space, in green space, but it also ultimately will cut down the long-term population. So that's another reason to do it. And right now is really a good time for us to try to make those kinds of trade-offs because Martin County has, I looked it up, they did a residential capacity study that shows that they've got enough approved residential property for, geez, probably 20 years to go. When Minnefield comes online, there is absolutely no rational reason to approve another large project under the Martin County Comprehensive Plan. So that means that the pressure on the ag lands that are 20-acre properties, that they're looking at an even longer future. So our bargaining position is better than it's ever been. So, or not ever been, but better than it's been. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, we're in a better spot for sure. You know, Mary, I have to say, I'm going to put these articles up. You wrote these articles, I think it was 2006 and 2007, the guest columns. I'll put them up on the Facebook Live feed so that you folks can read them. But I'll read a little bit from it here today. It's stunning. It's every bit as appropriate today as it was almost 20 years ago. Mary, it's almost like, honestly, you read these, and she had a crystal ball of what we'd be talking about here today. And it's a shame that nothing...
Nobody listened.
Right, nobody listened 20 years ago. You know, she says, what lands do we want to save? Where do we want to put the new people? No one knows how to stop growth, and just slowing it down won't save our environment or quality of life. For example, over the past 20 years, growing only 2% per year has gobbled up all the green space east of Florida's Turnpike and created traffic nightmares. Remember, this is about 20 years ago, folks. We must limit and confine growth, and we can use the county's land pattern study to do it by answering these key questions. How many people do we want to cram into the urban service district east of the Turnpike? This is about our quality of life. Ranchet supporters who exhort us to protect the Comprehensive Plan argue that there is room inside our urban service boundary to squeeze in another 60,000 to 90,000 people. That's eastward hoe, a smart growth approach devised to mitigate overdevelopment in South Florida. It reasons that if eastern lands along US-1 and the railroads are redeveloped into dense urban cores, people will start walking and using mass transit. That may create functional urban communities, but if we prefer to protect the quiet neighborhoods and slower suburban lifestyle we enjoy today, we must stop thinking like South Florida and invent a small growth approach that minimizes development east of the Turnpike rather than maximizes it. What lands do we want to save? Saving land by taking it out of development forever is the best way to limit and contain growth. Sustaining community lands proposes preserving the Treasure Coast Greenway. That would restore and reconnect natural systems that include our Comprehensive Everglades Restoration Plan lands in Palmar, and double our ability to clean up the rivers. We should also save green space inside the urban service boundary. Will ranchettes protect the environment and stop growth? Nobody wants ranchettes all the way to Lake Okeechobee. Biologists advocate preserving connected environmental systems. Ranchettes destroy 75% of our uplands, leaving homeowners with little environmental education to manage the isolated pocket preserves they create. Ranchet ditches and roadways destroy wetlands by lowering the water table and diverting sheet flow, and ranchettes encourage growth. Under our current plan, when the urban service boundary fills up, it annexes ranchet lands, making them urban and adding 40 times more people. Can clustering limit growth and preserve land? Our plan gives away development rights. We should make developers pay to develop land by taking other land out of development forever. The clustering project outside the urban service boundary near Hobbs Sound proposes to exchange 2,300 acres of environmentally sensitive land for the right to build several hundred houses. That will limit growth and preserve land. This you wrote over 20 years ago, and this is something that we're just discussing even right now when we had the Rural Lifestyle Amendment. So folks, I'm going to post these articles in the Facebook Live and the feed so that you can read them for yourself. But Mary, you haven't changed one stance. You haven't changed your opinion. You saw this 20 years ago.
Only thing is sustaining community lands switched to saving the Martin Grade.
Right.
And other than that, I stand convicted.
And absolutely. And you wrote, there's a couple of the articles, but you've always stayed involved. We're going to go to a short commercial break here shortly, but Michael Circus for Martin County Commission District Five wants to remind all residents that the greatest power you have as a resident is to be involved in your local politics. Vote on August 20th for your next county commissioner, Michael Circus, focused on the future, educated on the past. Paid for by Michael Circus Campaign for County Commission District Five. So folks, we're going to be back in just a minute, but we're talking today in the studio with Mary Dawson, and we've yet to discuss her books and the one that she just released called "Indian Town." And yes, these books, except for "Code Name Nanette," are based around your experiences here in Martin County and the history here in Martin County. So very exciting. I can't wait to talk to you about those and share those with the readers that we can purchase right here at our Stewart Heritage Museum and also on Amazon. And also, you can purchase them at your store.
At Palm City Farms Produce and Market.
Make sure you visit that out there on Citrus Highway. So we will be right back in just about 30 seconds.
Attention boaters, are you looking for a safe harbor during hurricane season or a top-notch boatyard to keep your vessel in tip-top shape? Look no further than Indian Town Marina. Indian Town Marina is not just your average boat storage facility. Nestled in South Florida along the Okeechobee Waterway, we're a well-protected hurricane haul that savvy cruisers love to call home. We offer a full array of boatyard services or do-it-yourself. Reserve your safe hurricane harbors today and let Indian Town Marina be the ultimate caretaker for your vessel. For more information, call 597-2457 or visit indiantownmarina.com. Get ready, country music lovers. Coming to Archie's this weekend, it's Susie Nash with a soul of patsy, Martina's vocal range, Reba's swagger, and Dolly's heart. Yes, you heard it right. Susie Nash is setting her course to be the next country sensation. Catch her live at Archie's in Fort Pierce Friday and Saturday from 5:00 to 8:00 and Sunday from 2:00 to 5:00. Too far away? Don't fret. Just drum your way to Spotify, Apple Music, or any streaming service, or grab a CD at susienash.com. So tune in and turn it up. It's time for Susie Nash. Commercial Mortgage has been in the industry of small balance corporate finance since 2003. Our focus is on equity, new debt solutions, challenging corporate foreclosures and debt restructures. Commercial Mortgage never charges a front fee and consultations are always free. Areas of expertise include hotels, marinas, office buildings, restaurants, apartments, multifamily, condos, golf courses, home builders, and land development, including new and repurposed developments. Call Commercial Mortgage LLC at 561-310-5295, or visit us online at commerciamortgagellc.com. You're listening to the Casey Ingram Show on WSTU Digital 1450. Call in with questions and comments at 2209-788-220WSTU. And now, back to the show.
Michael Circus for Martin County Commission District Five wants to remind all residents that the greatest power you have as a resident is to be involved in your local politics. Vote on August 20th for your next county commissioner. Michael Circus, focused on the future, educated on the past. Paid for by Michael Circus Campaign for County Commission District Five. And oh, boy, folks, I tell you what, I cannot wait till March 6th when Susie Nash is in the studio. She is going on tour. She has a new release that she's, a new single that she's just releasing. Fantastic, up-and-coming country singer, and you can see her at Archie's every weekend, Fridays and Saturdays from 5:00 to 8:00 and Sunday from 2:00 to 5:00. We all know Archie's. It's in Fort Pierce, Archie Seabreeze, 401 South Ocean Drive, and it's the place where no shoes, no shirts, no problem. In the studio, I have Mary Dawson, and we've been talking a lot about things that are happening in the county, and Mary was a former commissioner, and Mary actually was involved with the very first comp plan in 1980, Maggie Hertella and the whole crew. You were there from the beginning, and you love this county.
Do I?
You do.
I'd go in any place else. I've had that conversation with my family, and I said, no.
No, no. What is it that you like best about Martin County?
I think it's because I have a piece of land, right, that I found that feels like home. You know, I feel like the power lines of the universe come together there and fill me with a better spirit, and I always have. And once you got that commitment emotionally to a place, you have got to...
You protect it.
Stick with it. And my phone is ringing in my hearing aids.
Uh-huh.
Go ahead, please talk.
So we got somebody calling Mary, but she is right here.
I'm not answering.
You know, we're going to talk a little bit about her books here in a minute, but one thing that is special about Martin County is all of our green space. And you can tell when you cross the county line going down 95 or the Turnpike, right? You head into Palm Beach County, it's all of a sudden a bunch of buildings. You head into St. Lucie County, same thing, a bunch of buildings. Martin County is different, and it's really something that is worth protecting. It's almost unfortunate that the different factions in Martin County can't get together. It's almost unfortunate that the different factions in Martin County can't get together, and we all want the same thing. We want to protect it. But, you know, Mary, you want to protect it as much as anybody. And you saw, you studied, you got a, you know, a master's degree, right? A master's degree. You were studying lands and development in Florida. You wrote a paper about it, and you brought your ideas to Martin County and said, "This is the way we can protect our county." And it has to do with clustering, but it's preserving land in perpetuity. Those kind of go hand in hand. And there's just a contingent where people feel that that is allowing growth. What do you say? Because I know you said it's affected you personally, that you've taken the stand, you've stood by it your entire career, your entire life. You still stand by it. You still believe it. We're seeing it somewhat come to fruition a little bit today now. What do you say? And I've had Paul Laura in here as well, and he was a big proponent of the Rural Lifestyle Amendment as well. But what do you say to the other contingent that said, "No, that's allowing too much growth"?
What do I think of what?
The contingent that says that's allowing too much growth, something like the Rural Lifestyle Amendment or the clustering that allows.
That it's going to create more growth?
Yeah, that's the argument that they're giving, the no-growth faction.
Okay. One thing is that people are very afraid that if you cluster and you end up with like a little community here and then another little community there and green space in the middle, that eventually that green space is also going to fill in. And so that is something that can be dealt with. And one of the reasons that you see some language in the rural lands is that one of the ways you do it is you do it by having more than one owner, because you can't trust government. You cannot give land to politicians because they'll use it however they want. They'll use it one way, and then when it gets convenient, they'll use it another way. The South Florida Water Management District has sold off environmental lands a few years ago. So you can't have just one owner. What they did, what Martin County did with Alapata Ranch, and Martin County is one owner and the South Florida Water Management District is another one. But something else you can do is make a nonprofit one of the owners, and the nonprofit is dedicated to conservation. So then another thing you can do is put covenants that run with the land, which are enforceable by, law school talking, that are enforceable by individuals. And so all of those things can be put on. Nothing is guaranteed 100%, but you can put layer after layer after layer of protections to pretend that fill-in that people are afraid of. Another thing that is that they're afraid of is honestly, to me, a made-up argument, this argument that we, that the urban service boundary, if it's ever breached, is going to destroy our future in some fashion. The reason it's a made-up argument is the comprehensive plan that was adopted in 1990 and is still in effect says, "The urban service district shall move at a certain point in time." So to me, that's just short-term thinking. And if you really want to make a difference in terms of the environmental or even human health and safety and well-being, you have to have long-term thinking. And you have to act early in the process rather than try to scramble at the end to save things. So that's become an artificial argument that has divided this county for decades, and that's one of the, it's a win-lose, because they have held, it's helped us hold the line on growth, but it's also cost us so much in terms of our community well-being because there are really wonderful people that are business people who would like to do things and anti-growth people who don't want to do things, who are also equally wonderful, and they hate each other for absolutely made-up reasons. Plus, it's counterproductive. The one thing, the only thing about this Save Our Beaches movement, how come Martin County has more beach, public beachfront than every place else in Florida? Back in 1969, this is 55 years ago, the business people and the conservationists got together, and they went out and they raised the money, and they bought all that beach, all those beach strips and all that property.
Really?
And that is what you can do as a community if you actually decide to work to make your common vision come true instead of fight over how to do it. And that's what we've been doing for 20 years and, geez, now 30 years. We have been fighting over how to save the western lands and doing almost nothing to save. I take that back. The grand master plan always was to keep the value low so that government could buy it. We've bought a lot, but there's only so much that the government can and will buy. So, and there's still 100,000 or more plus acres out there that are available. If we work together, which is what we tried to do with Friends of Martin County, and we got that close, but it failed.
Right.
If you work together, you can, first of all, the minute that I stopped being anti-growth and started being pro-Martin County, I discovered a whole lot of new friends and people that actually are nice, wonderful, intelligent, hard-working citizens. And they are something that if we don't, it's like politics now. If you're a Democrat, you can't even have a conversation with a Republican. If you don't talk to people, you never learn what works. You just never learn what you need to know to make things better. I'm sorry. That's a rant. I apologize.
It's not a rant. It is, you're talking about that. I keep thinking about so many friends that I have here in Martin County, and you're absolutely right, especially has the pro-growth and no-growth contingent. I'm friends with, I have friends on both sides, but when you start talking about it, all of a sudden, it turns nasty, and they get mad at you if you don't agree. And at the end of the day, somehow, we got to come together and realize we all really do want the same thing. It's, this Rural Lifestyle, what you, folks, I encourage you to please go to my Facebook page and read these op-eds that Mary wrote 20 years ago. You're going to say, "She didn't write that 20 years ago. She must have wrote it just last month." It's so relevant today, but somehow, we have to come together as residents because we want the same thing. We love this county, and we love the green spaces, and we don't want the overgrowth. We don't want the big high-rises, and there's so many protections that have been put in place that have been working. But as Florida grows and people keep moving here, and they will, we can't stop that. We have to figure out a way to make sure we protect those lands, and we can work together, but we have to work together to do that. That Save Our Beaches story you just shared with us, prime example.
Can I talk about inside the urban service district for a minute?
Yes, please.
The article you read, or the thing that you read, said buy land inside the urban service district. If you talk to people, they still today, they want us to be low-density and green. If you, what, talk to them and ask them what is hurting them, because Martin County, long-term Martin County residents are hurting. They feel like they're losing Martin County, and there's a lot of reasons for that. One of the reasons is traffic. And honestly, there's nothing in the world that can be done about it, and it's not the Martin County Commission's fault, and it's not the Stewart Commission's fault. I see it out on, at our farm, I see 50,000 cars a day coming in from Port St. Lucie on Citrus.
And they're widening Martin Highway.
And that's just the western part of the county, and the eastern part of the county is connected to eastern Port St. Lucie. Okay, so we can't solve traffic. The other thing people are upset about is all the big apartment complexes and the big monolithic buildings. I would say that the apartment complexes, if you look at it, are all in the city of Stewart. They're not, the city of Stewart a while back annexed almost all of the US-1 corridor and a big part of the, of the Canor Highway corridor, all the way from Jensen practically to Port Salerno. So if you're angry, be angry at the right people, but the complex, the apartment complexes are causing a problem. This is all why we still need to buy land inside the urban service district. The state legislature has basically gutted local comprehensive planning. Are you familiar with the Live Local Law?
Yes, Live Local Act, yes.
Okay. The Live Local Law, I just looked it up again this morning to make sure, basically says that every piece of property that's commercial or core, or I think one of, industrial, can develop into rental apartments at the highest conceivable density in the county, at the highest, at the highest elevation stories, most stories in the county. And your county commission or your city cannot do a thing. It doesn't even go to a vote. So ladies and gentlemen, if you're not happy with what you're seeing today, drive around and look at, and try to imagine, again, think out into the future, and imagine 15 to 30 units an acre, four stories high on every piece of industrial. All that industrial park out there on US-1 could be a whole new city, bigger than the city of Stewart. So we really are in a new era of planning, and a lot of our old conversations don't work anymore. Can I have time to say one more thing?
You do.
Okay. Why the, why we need to buy the water, the land along the waterways. Three things set Martin County apart. We're low-density, we're green, and we have access to water. If you drive around the rest of South Florida, you can't get to it, and a lot of places you can't even see it because it's all been blocked off. What set us apart is that we have gotten, we have made access to water public in Martin County.
Love that.
So we can do two things at one time. We can maintain a huge part of our Martin County difference and protect the waterways and clean the water just by buying land that's along the waterways. And all of that's inside the urban service district. So that's why I'm so adamant about that part of the, Martin County Forever, another rant, forgive me.
It's okay, and you're absolutely right, though, and that's where we have to stress with, they have sent, Save Martin County Forever, they have sent a proposal that'll be on the ballot in November, but also the Rural Lifestyle Amendment that had a conservation part to it. You have, the only way to save these lands and protect these lands is if they're in a permanent easement or not easement, but conservation. It has to be in perpetuity. Otherwise, just with what happened with the Live Local Law, Tallahassee can come in and change the laws out from under our feet, and all of a sudden, our local officials, they do not have a say anymore. That really can happen. So how do we protect our lands now? I think that should be the biggest eye-opener to Martin County, is how powerful Tallahassee can be when they want to be. And by the way, that Live Local Act passed with no opposition in the Senate, and I think six in the House opposed it. So it was pretty much unanimously. That's how easy it can happen. So we really have to look and think outside the box. How are we going to preserve our lands, our blueways, the water? And I just think what you're saying right now is so pertinent, Mary, that we need to also think about what's inside our urban service boundary, especially with something like the Live Local Act.
It's where we live.
It's where we live, and if it's in a permanent conservation, they're not going to be able to build apartments. But if it's zoned commercial, if it's zoned industrial, guess what? They can be apartments now.
Yes.
And we have no say. So I love that you said that. And, you know, speaking of that, folks, elections are coming up. It's important to pay attention to who's running. And Michael Circus for Martin County Commission District Five wants to remind all residents that the greatest power you have as a resident is to be involved in your local politics. Vote on August 20th for your next county commissioner. Michael Circus. Focused on the future, educated on the past. Paid for by Michael Circus Campaign for County Commission District Five. So Mary, we're running out of time, and I don't want to let this hour slip by without talking about your books.
Oh, thank you.
And you, first of all, folks, you need to visit Palm City Farms. It's out on the corner, Martin Highway and Citrus Boulevard, but keep driving down Martin Highway. Oh, my gosh, that is the most beautiful, and it's Martin grade, most beautiful heaven-sent section of Martin County there is to drive through. I love, love driving through. You see old Florida, and you got the canopy of the trees, and it's for miles. So let's start out here a little bit. I don't know which book you want to start with, if you want to go with the first book, The Riverway Home, or with the latest release, Indian Town. I'm so excited to hear about Indian Town because you just released it, so.
Okay. Well, I need to tell you a little bit about the first book, because in that book, three kids get, lose their boat on Lake Okeechobee and end up coming down the river into Stewart on an adventure. It's a Disney movie in writing, and it was written really as a kind of a love poem to the environment and the history of our western lands, which, which a lot of people think doesn't, don't have history, and they really do. Then, but when the book ended, the kids were like 14 years old in the year 1914, and I thought, well, what life, what a 14-year, a kid, that kid has going forward? And one was a Cracker Cowboy, one is a Seminole Indian, and one is an African-American girl. And I said, well, wow, the 20th century was full of stuff happening, and history happening. But I couldn't figure out how to write it until I did my own family history and realized that if you had an ancestor of one of them coming back and trying to find out his family history, that you could do it in a way where you could get the bits and pieces that would be interesting. And so in Indian Town, which is my latest book, it's just out, the ancestor of the girl comes back to Martin County and gets involved in the, with the family of the young, the Cracker Cowboy, and then all kinds of other stuff happens. But while he's researching his, the history, he learns about Seminole history, he learns about Rosewood, he learns about Zora Neale Hurston, and then he also has coming-of-age adventures of his own happening. And it has a secret twisty ending.
Oh, love that. Exactly. But you have to buy the book to know what that is.
Oh, yeah. I just spoiled the alert.
Folks, these books, they're all available on Amazon. You can also go out to Palm City Farms, and the Stewart Heritage Museum has them. So this is very exciting. So tell us a little bit, too, because Codename Nanette is a prequel to the book. So tell us how that fits in, because that was about women in World War II in France.
Well, when I was looking at that, at history of what could Queenie do in the 20th century that would be interesting, first of all, she's African-American, which puts her in a different set of categories, but everywhere I looked, it was like, it was like the universe was leading me the way. I read about African-American nurses. I read about, and then I said, "Wait a minute, World War II." And I said, African America, I Googled African-American women in World War II, and the first thing that came up was Josephine Baker, who was an American, African-American woman who was like revered by the French for her role in the French Resistance in World War II. So bingo, now Queenie can go to France and get caught up in the French Resistance.
Wow.
Then, all these women who had been silent for 50 and 60 years started their stories from, they had confidentiality agreements that kept them from talking. Their stories started coming out, and the stories of bravery of those women who worked in the Resistance in France and other countries, they were mind-blowing. And the most important thing about it to me was the, the way that different ones of them reacted to it. Some of them loved it. They never, they never, they got to be like a man. They got to carry guns and kill people and have sex and smoke cigarettes and drink, and it was the best thing since sliced bread. And other ones were horrified by the stuff that they did, and it carried the weight of it with them all their lives. it with them all their lives. And it took a toll. Every one of them paid a price, except the ones that ended up in the CIA later, which you know, they're pretty cool too. So suddenly again, I had all this information and a story to tell. And that's, that is, women on bicycles made D-Day possible. And one of them named Peggy, a woman, a Canadian lady named Peggy, rode her bicycle and posed as a prostitute and God only knows, I don't know how she posed, and got sent detailed information to the Allies on where every single piece of German equipment was.
Wow.
In, you know, so that they could know where to plan for mines and know where to plan for traps and stuff. And there, and Peggy is inspiration for Nanette in this.
Okay.
In that book. But if you don't know about the women on bicycles who won World War II, you need to at least honor them if you don't want to study them because there were, a lot of them were 18, 19, 20 years old. And they would parachute. Somebody described Peggy as being all high heeled shoes and red lipstick. She would parachute down behind the lines with her high heeled shoes tied around her neck.
Oh my gosh. This is absolutely incredible if you think about.
Have to write about people like that, don't you?
That's, it's exciting. It's exciting. I mean, folks, you know, when you think about Martin County and we truly are the treasure, the treasure coast, and it's just a place that we all love. But Mary, there are so many treasures that are here, but you're one of them. You truly are. It's, I love having different guests in the studio, but this is one of my favorite because you're part of the local color, you're part of the local history, you know so much about Martin County, but you're truly a treasure and you have so much to offer. And it's, it's not only the history of Martin County, your love for Martin County and wanting to protect it, but this wonderful author, this is three books, so already that she's, and who knows when the next will come, you never know. But I cannot wait to read these books. Again, it's Indian Town, The Riverway Home and Code Name Nanette. And these are going to be just fantastic books. You know, you've got wonderful ratings on Amazon. People are really enjoying these books. When did you write your first book? Was it 2013?
Yeah.
2013. So, and 10 years later, you released the third one and it's just absolutely fantastic. And I don't have time to read the descriptions from Amazon on the books, but I encourage you, go to Amazon, just read, it tells you a little bit about each of the books. And I can't wait to read them myself, Mary.
Let's say one thing.
100%.
I just came from Stewart Heritage and they were having an old timers meeting there. And one of the guys said, I love that book. He says, I knew every single place that they were. I could follow every step they took. I loved it. And so, and that was exactly what I wanted in The Riverway Home, somebody who actually knew the truth of it, that, and knew that how real and how true it is to the, to the way this place was back in the day. It's only 100 and like eight years now.
Only 100, I know it.
Yeah, we're young.
We are in the history of the world. We certainly are and it goes by in a flash. So again, folks, take a drive out to Palm City Farms. It's on the corner of Martin Highway, Citrus Boulevard. It's a wonderful shop, by the way. We got to talk about that for just a second. You have all kinds of produce and it's, it's a farmer's market. It's local, it's locally sourced.
Yes, we focal and low, focus on local foods.
So make sure you're out there and after you stop in the store, just keep right on driving down Martin Highway and enjoy the most beautiful Martin grade that Mary talked about in her book, The Riverway Home. Mary Dawson, thank you. I really appreciate you coming in today. Learned a lot.
I appreciate you having me. Thank you.
My pleasure. Remember folks, this will air next week on WSTU AM 1450, February 28.